If you'd please turn it off. Again, if you have a cellphone or BlackBerry, if you'd please turn it off and put it on vibrate before we get started. Just some housekeeping chores. The room's about reaching capacity. Director Brooks is informing me and Katie that there's a microphone at the podium so people in the hallway will be able to hear. If you come to testify, you don't need to pick the microphone up. That way, the people in the hallway can hear. It's capacity. So I just want to make sure we're clear on that. Again, don't pick the microphone up. If you have a cellphone, triple double check. Please put it on vibrate. Another housekeeping chore. For public hearing, you don't need to sign in. At the podium, you only sign in for public comment, which would have to do outside of the public hearing on Senate 236. We also have a rezoning this evening. Again, you don't need to sign in on that. That would be a voluntary basis. Either you're testifying in favor or opposition of the zoning request. That decision will not be made this evening. That will be made on September 18th already. Time's flying. Also, we'd ask during each of those, the rezoning, the public hearing, that your testimony be directed toward the Board of County Commissioners, not to somebody in the audience. We would ask you to be respectful of everyone who's testifying. Give them an opportunity to be heard. No booing, no clapping, no shouting. I understand you have sergeant-at-arms in the rear. If we can't get some order, I would have to ask that officer to ask someone to please leave. So we're just here to listen tonight. It's not a debate. It's not back and forth. We're here just to listen and take testimony. The Board is going to meet on September 11th. Next Tuesday afternoon, discuss public comment and ways to move forward. All these maps up here are drafts. That's all they are. This is a working document. There's probably going to be plenty more. So again, we just ask you to be respectful. And with that, how about we all stand and join in saying the pledge of allegiance?
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members of the Board, and from this evening, we have the August 21st Commission of Meeting Minutes. And if members of the Board had an opportunity to review the minutes, we entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written. Do we have a motion for approval?
Second.
We have second as the ready discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to Paris. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the rezoning. This is rezoning 2012-047 Rosemont Farm Lane Port Deposit to request a rezoning of 48.63 acres from Northern Agricultural Residential, NAR, to Low Density Residential, LDR. And I'll refer to Director Scentstrom and staff. Thank you.
Eric House? Yes, Paul. Mr. President, members of the Board, the applicant for the seating rezoning is Nicholas Barnes. Property location is 7 Rosemont Farm Lane Port Deposit, District 7, Tax Map 23, 4066. Property is presently zoned Northern Agricultural Residential, NAR. And the rezoning request is to rezonate 48.63 acres from Northern Agricultural Residential, NAR, to Low Density Residential, LDR. The property owner is Nicholas D. Barnes and Wendy A. Barkowski. All those desiring to testify in this matter, if you would please stand, raise your ready hand, be sworn in. Do you infer the truth of penalties per year for testifying?
Yes. Sorry, I need, sir, for the record, I need a yes from you. Sir?
Mr. Barnes, say yes.
Mr. President, the applicant can put their case on, as this is a rezoning hearing. The proof is on that to demonstrate to you that there has been a mistake in last comprehensive rezoning to justify their request, that there has been substantial change in the character of the neighborhoods since that rezoning, two comprehensive rezonings to justify their requests. And so it's time we should ask the applicants to present their case to you so that we can hear their evidence.
My name is Wendy Barkowski at 7 Rosemont Farm Lane Port Deposit.
My name is Nick Barnes, 63 Rosemont Farm Lane Port Deposit.
As appears in the application that we had turned in, we believe there was an error on the comprehensive plan for our zoning. We bought this property in 89. It was zoned at that time, SR. We had no intention of developing the property, and I'm sure everyone says that. And it's a farm, and we want to keep it that way. But it drastically changed the value of the farm by changing the zoning. And it wasn't something that we were notified of until the Wybelle Road Bridge was needing to have repairs done to it. We were notified by a company, by diversified properties, saying that we need some of the property. And we're not, you know, objecting to having changes made and things like that, but then they proceeded to tell us that the property was zoned, NAR, and I told him otherwise, and he said, "Oh, no, ma'am, it's NAR." And then I called two different offices in the Cecil County Government, and they gave me two different zoning. So I was curious as to how two different offices in the government could give me two different zonings. And we've let it go back the way it was. We're not asking for anything that we didn't already have.
I went to the bank. I was going to build a new house, and that's when I discovered that the zoning had changed. I put the paper down, and they said, "Oh, no, you don't have that." And I said, "Well, here..." And the bank, I went to the same bank that we wanted to, and they filled up the address with, "Yes, that's our..." You know, that old one. Suburban residential. My wife is a master of the bought farm in 89. And my daughter, Erin, is a ham. And I just want to keep it that way, you know? I mean, we don't have nothing, or nothing else, so we're developing more. And my daughter runs a horse business, agriculture. And I just want to keep the thing just what I have. I'm not asking for nothing new, just like retain what I bought, what I paid for.
Any questions, members of the Board?
So I just want to make a statement. I think a lot of these people are here tonight because they received a letter. And it's ironic that we notified them about the downzoning. And during the comprehensive rezoning process, they didn't contact you, which I think needs to be a process of the comprehensive rezoning process.
We have a zoning map here in front of the commissioners. The question is, which is the subject property on the zoning map? If you look at, on the map before you, which is Tax Map 23, if you look at the corner of Dr. Jack, the northeasterly quadrant of the intersection of Dr. Jack Road and Wybelle Road?
Cannot make out the road names. Can't tell you.
Okay. Any other questions, members of the Board?
I was going to ask, Mr. Barkowski and Mr. Barnes, have you checked with your neighbors if they would be in opposition or support of rezoning? The problem, which is something we have to consider, is that because this is after the rezoning process, it would be seen as a change in character in the area, and it might tip off a other rezoning. So it might help if you had support of the neighbors in your area.
Could they have come forth and said, "We checked." They were all notified.
That's true.
Yes, they were notified in this case.
There might be some here that are going to testify.
Right. And we had a posting on the property, the sign. They all came out and put the sign in and saying that there was going to be a rezoning, you know, meetings and all the adjacent property owners did receive letters. Some of the property owners did come to us and say, "What's going on?" I said, "We're just getting rezoning hopefully back this way of ours. We're not, we're not changing anything. We have good plans." But it drastically changed the value of the property. So we just want it back with what we purchased.
If you look on the records, I think my wife traced it back, that's been that way since back in the 50s. We won't have any of that. And if I remember, I couldn't find her wallpaper. She traced the farm back to day one, the old courthouse. And back in the 50s, that's when they changed it to have a suburban residential.
Any other questions? Mr. Scentstrom?
Thank you, Mr. President. Staff, I recommend disapproval of this request based on a, there being no demonstrated change in the character of the neighborhoods since the last comprehensive rezoning, and there being no mistake in the last comprehensive rezoning. Mr. Houston is the finest fact for the record.
The finest fact regarding this application is as follows. The neighborhood is an area within a half-mile radius of the subject parcel. The area is bordered by Fire Tower Road to the east, Maryland Route 276 to the south, residential and agricultural land to the west and north. There have been no changes in the area since the 2011 comprehensive rezoning. Population changes. The population of Cecil County in the year 2000 was 85,951. In 2010, it was 101,108, or a 17.7% increase. This property is located within Census tract 312.01. The population of that census tract in 2000 was 5,689, and in 2010, it was 6,334, or an 11.34% increase. Public sewer and water are not available to this parcel. Access to this parcel would be from Wybelle Road. Any subdivision would be subject to planning commission approval. And any, any development of the land should be compatible with the existing and proposed development of the area. And this property is located in the Royal Conservation District of the Comprehensive Plan. The Royal Conservation District is intended to encourage the retention of agricultural and forestry uses and to support the county's agricultural industry. And this parcel is not located in any special district.
Thank you, Mr. Houston. Is there anyone here who would like to testify either in favor or opposition of this request? If so, I just ask you to come to the podium, state your name and your address, and just your testimony for the record. Good evening, commissioners.
My name is Charles H. Herzog, 56 McCusick Drive, Glora, Maryland. I spoke in opposition of this request at the planning commission hearing, although you can see that. And I hope that you have copies of that testimony and read it. I won't go over details, but I was very concerned on how the planning commission came to conduct you that there was a mistake. It was not a mistake. It was only things wrong. Despite planning, zoning staff recommendation to disapprove, as Eric stated and Cliff stated, there was no demonstrated change, mistake in 2010 zoning whatsoever. The planning and zoning department made a motion to approve based on a mistake. I feel this was absolutely arbitrary and egregious. Those of you in the audience that may not know what that means, it's the absence of a rational connection between the facts found and the choices made. Fancy legal terminology. Basically, the comprehensive plan drew the lines. Some people were on the outside of the line that had this designation of certain zoning previous to the 2010 comprehensive plan. Some people inside had a different. The 2010 comprehensive plan changed some of that. These five people in front of you, unfortunately, was one of those people. The comprehensive plan in 2010, the map shows the boundary between a rural conservation district and the low-density growth areas Rock Run Road. Everything south of that road is in, is in the LDGA. Everything north of Rock Run Road is in the rural conservation district. Since subject properties in the rural conservation district, they were given an NAR zoning, and that is correct. I have to disagree on some of the things that Mr. Barnes said. I did a little research. I looked at the 1962, 1974 zoning designations for that property, even though the names have changed dramatically, and it drove me crazy because of the inconsistency in the names. Basically, that property was a rural conservation property. The aberration occurred in 1990. The zoning designation changed from a rural conservation, in essence, whatever name I want to call it, but it was a rural conservation district. It changed to an SR designation in 1990. They bought the property in 1989. What I'm concerned about, and again, I have no malice to these people, as a fine farmer, as I support small farmers, I'm a small farmer, I live not too far from these fine, fine folks, and I certainly won't push them any ill will. I wish them all the best in the world. However, you are opening up a can of worms that the comprehensive plan, which was done by a lot of hard work, a lot of folks in 2010, they drew boundaries. If you're on the left side of the boundary, this is the designation. You're on the inside of the boundary, it's this designation. Unfortunately, they were on the outside. What was once suburban residential is now NAR, and the zoning for these folks have changed. But you can't just arbitrarily say, "This property, we're going to change back." But 10 other neighbors that may be up and down that same boundary, we're not going to change. If you do, Ms. Campbell and the legal staff of Cecil County got a lot of money in that legal fight because you're opening yourself up to all sorts of lawsuits. Unfortunately, the value of their property may change. For those in the audience, the zoning for SR in their property, they could put, and I know they don't want to, and they will not, hopefully will not develop this property. It goes down to one-to-one. It goes down to 48 subdivisions, 48 properties, houses, whatever. And I'm not worried about them and their tour duty on this earth. I'm worried about what happens next. One-to-one ratio in our district is totally unacceptable. And I know they have no plans to develop it, and I believe them completely. However, this is a huge mistake if you start changing this for this person, or that person, or that person. Doing something according to one's will or crease and therefore conveying a notion of tendency to abuse the possession of power. I felt what happened two weeks ago was just that. The planning commission abused their power despite the very expertise of planning and zoning. Mr. Houston, Mr. Scentstrom made it clear why they voted, or recommended voting down this. And I think they presented a pretty good case. Please do not open up a can of worms like this. You're really throwing the comprehensive plan out the door. The boundaries and the designations that these hard-working folks in that comprehensive plan gave will be worthless if you start being arbitrary and egregious. I thank you for your time this evening. Good night.
Is there anyone else that cares to speak in favor or opposition of this request?
It's quite a speech he gave.
I need you to state your name and address for the record, sir.
All right. My name's Vincent Sands, 25 Beaver Court, rising South Maryland. It's quite a speech he gave about laws and whatnot. Too bad that no one applies laws anymore. Seems the majority seems to try to rule over top of people like him, who owns property. It's his property, it's not the county's property, and the majority seems to think that they can go against his constitutional right to own property and do what he wishes with it. I think it's a, it's an outrage that everyone would jump on board because they assemble some committee to tell this individual what he can do with his property. He's out in the middle of nowhere. It's his property, he should be able to do what he wants with it without anybody interfering. I just have a second.
I need you to state your name and address for the record.
I can do that. Elizabeth Paul, 33 Sharpen Lane. I don't live near these residents, but I drive past this property frequently to visit relatives. But that's not the reason I'm coming up here. Reason I'm coming up here to the property owner, and I thought the reason that we came here is because we have rights to variances, we have a right to ask for what they're asking for. And that's the reason that they came here, is to ask, and that they have rights. That's all I had to say.
Is there anyone else that likes to speak in favor or opposition of this request?
John Malinsky, 986 Irishtown Road. I'm going to throw my two cents in here, I really wasn't. I can remember back when they created this NAR designation, we were changed. I was changed, John Jay was changed, and we didn't find out for years and years. And when I finally found out, I went to John and said, "John, how are you zoning?" And he said, "A." I said, "No, John, we're NAR." And I said, "Well, how did they change this and didn't tell us?" So I went to the chairman of the planning commission and says, "Why did this happen?" And he says, "It's such a massive communication thing that we just couldn't accomplish that." And I said, "Wait a minute. You sent me a tax bill every year, and you couldn't have a little piece that says, 'You may have been changed'?" I'm not buying. So I want to throw that out, you know? As a former summary court marshal in the Army, okay? There are circumstances of mitigation and expatuation. All I'm asking is, please consider what notice they had, when they bought it, okay? And whether they in fact knew that there was or wasn't a change. I know I was baffled, and I'm sure John was baffled too when I told him that we had been rezoned. Because I'll guarantee you, there's a lot of things I wouldn't have done to my farm if I knew I was NAR and they took the quarry behind me and made it SR. And now I'm going to have 708 houses there, 64 houses to the left.
Sir, with all due respect, our comments are to their request in particular. I just need you to stay on the point, please. We have a long evening ahead of us. If you're in favor or opposition of this request?
Okay. I'm in favor of their request because as far as I'm concerned, they weren't properly communicated to.
Yes, my name's Richard Fox. I address 1668 Conley Road in rising South Maryland. Our family has owned the farm since 1900. My grandfather, 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 grandmother bought it in 1900. We've lived from generation to generation on there, expanding a couple parcels to my brother and sister, myself, for homes, and it's been a legacy left in the family for years and years. And it's something that's been handed down from generation, which should stay that way and be able to do as we see fit to the property.
With all due respect, sir, are you here, this is for this rezoning request, this is in for Senate Bill 236, so are you testifying in favor or opposition of this request, this rezoning?
I'm in opposition of the rezoning.
Okay.
For the green.
Okay, thanks.
For the green area.
Okay, that hearing's a little later this evening. This is something totally, totally different. Okay, the Board of Commissioners will take this decision up on September 18th at their evening meeting and will render a decision at that time. Thank you. You can come to the meeting that night, and you also get some correspondence from planning and zoning office. 18th, 7 o'clock.
Mr. President, could I ask the planning and zoning office to give me a map like this that was prepared in 1990? I'd like to see the 1990 version.
We can make a copy of the tax map for that for you. If you want a history of the property, I can give it to you now. From 1962 to 1979, it was owned agricultural residential. From 1979 to 1993, it was owned agricultural residential. From 1993 to 2011, it was owned suburban residential. From 2011 to the present, it was owned northern agricultural residential. Please provide copies of the previous tax map as well.
I'd like to see the other properties related to this one.
I put on the screen, Mr. Hodge, I put the former zoning that was in effect from 1993 to 2011, the subject property is the one that is going to blink right there. What you see there, that is the former SR zone, suburban residential, is the blue polka dot. The green is NAR. The yellow is MH. Orange is Business General. So that was the zoning that was in effect from 1993 to 2011.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to the public hearing on Senate Bill 236, draft map, draft tier map. Director Eric Scentstrom?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, a summary of how it got to this point in this process. As the Board is aware, the last session of the Maryland General Assembly passed what is commonly referred to as Senate Bill 236. That was signed by the Governor, became effective on July 1st of this year. That bill requires the counties to develop what is known as a tier map in order to create tiers 1 through 4 by December 31st of 2012. If the counties fail to do so, then the legislation states that those subdivisions can be approved unless they're minor subdivisions on individual subject systems or major or minor subdivisions on the mature than what is known as a tier 1 area, which is the red area on the various versions of the map behind this wall. And just a point, a couple of points of clarification. In the tier 4, whatever ultimately becomes tier 4, there will be no opportunity for an individual to engage in what is known as a major subdivision process after December 31st unless the commissioners make a request to the state for an analysis of the tier 4 areas. And that, and the analysis done by the state reveals that a 1 to 20 density is possible, or 1 to 21, or 1 to 22, or 1 to 30, whatever the case may be, based on the situation involved in the tiers. Now, that tier 4 area is analyzed on a county-wide basis. Properties that have previously been preserved, either through ownership by the state, a municipality, a county, or the federal government, will not be included in the acreage. However, properties that have previously been subdivided will be included in the acreage. Mr. Black has done a review of our tier 4 based upon draft map 4, and that has revealed that right now, it looks like the county's yield core density would be 1 to 13.74, which obviously would not be the 1 to 20 exception. Of course, we could still ask the state to do their review, but I would not be surprised if it came out to something similar to what Mr. Black's analysis has shown. So based upon the efforts over the summer, since the effectiveness of the legislation, meetings were held between staff and the commissioners, various iterations of a tier map were presented, and it was agreed upon that draft 4 would be the map that would be put out for public review and presented this evening for public comment, and that is how we got to where we are this evening.
Okay. And basically, what we'll do this evening is, is public hearing. Since we have a very large crowd, members of the Board typically, what we do is we'll go row by row down this right-hand side, my right, your left, row by row. right-hand side, my right, your left, row by row, and then anybody out in the hallway who would like to testify, then I'll just come off the back to the front here. So with that, we'll go ahead and start the process again. Your comments are toward the maps, toward the Board of Commissioners, not that anyone else in the room. I ask you to be respectful of the speakers, and please, no booing, clapping, hissing, or carrying on with your kind. Be respectful here. We, the Board and the staff, need to hear, so that's why we need everybody to cooperate. When everyone cooperates, everyone wins. So let's just do that this evening, and we're gonna hear what you're gonna have to say. We're gonna take this up again on September 11th to discuss the comments. Probably some more gyrations of more maps, I don't think we're anywhere near finished. And then keep moving forward here until we can get something that is fair to everyone involved. So with that, just here to listen tonight, not a debate, so with that, we'll start the
Dan Schneckenberger, 60 Red Fox Drive, Fairville. I've heard, I've gotten some more information before I generated these public comments. Just for the record, I am against Plan Maryland and Senate Bill 236, because I truly believe this takes out local control away from Cecil County residents and Cecil County government. I'm not supportive of any of these initiatives being driven by this Governor. And frankly, in preparation for this meeting, I had no idea we were gonna see all these other draft maps. So Commissioner Mullen, I am encouraged that this is a step that we're gonna take a look at, and we're gonna continue looking at the best maps moving forward. I'm not sure I heard correctly, but it's my understanding that the Planning Commission and the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee of 2011 has not rendered their opinions on these maps. I'm not sure how we got to this point for draft version 4 without their input. I think their input's important, they're citizen experts, they're appointed by your own group. I think they have to have their opinion before they move forward, and whatever draft announces, those people's input is very important. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the first row?
Good evening, I'm Keith Thompson. We live at 360 Big Highway in Roswell, Southern. We are right on the fringe of the town of Roswell, Southern. Spoke to representative of the town, and according to their records, that we are in the expansion of the town of Roswell, Southern. Future proposals up for the town. So I don't know where the Board stands on that. Mr. Bonberger was supposed to speak to someone down at the courthouse the last few days. I don't know whether that's happened or not, but I implore you to actually speak with him and let him explain to you the position that we stand on in 1360 Big Highway. And further, I implore you to really reconsider all this happening, if you have to do it, take the least amount of this you can, because there's a lot of recent farmers that will have been part of their whole life on these farms. And whatever their reasons today be, in the future, they should be able to do with their farms as they please. They're not hurting anyone. A lot of products coming out of Cecil County. But if they so choose, they only have the right to do with their property as the issue.
Mr. Thompson, very quickly, Mr. Bonberger did call me, I believe it was last week. There are some areas where properties were included in tier 4 that should not have been, and in those cases, you've done exactly the right things to connect with the town officials who will connect with Mr. Sennstrom to correct them. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the second row?
John Malinsky, 986 Irishtown Road. I had a really long spiel for you, but I'm gonna shorten it out of interest of Mr. Mullen's comment. I got my letter, thanks for the expedited letter, that's quite a tasking you guys went through. I was classified as four, I don't know what it's gonna wind up doing, but I guess I was a little surprised at that since when they're said and done with the houses behind me, I'm gonna have over 2,400 houses behind my farm, George Spencer's farm, and John Jale's farm. And the acreage is 37, I think George has 40, and Johnny's place is about 70. So I'm just baffled at it, but as far as the overall satisfaction, I'm totally against the Governor's effort here. I think it's just a way for him to take away our rights as American citizens. As an American and as a retired soldier, I resent what he's trying to do to all these farmers in Cecil County. So my request is that not three, not four, but all five of you, let's stand up for these people, and let's tell the Governor that in this particular case, what he's proposing is unacceptable, okay? And let's make the change. We have a comprehensive plan, we have the process assistance and structures in place to buy proprieties, which are in alignment with the Constitution. Let's go to that, right? Please, fight for these folks.
Good evening, I'm Mario Gangejemi. I'm at 1 Woodbine Circle, that's Glen Farm in Elton. I'm here tonight, I'm not just representing myself, I'm also representing the Cecil business leaders for better government. We recognize that as Commissioners, you're often tasked in dealing with tough state-mandated and usually unfunded requirements. It's difficult, we understand that. And frankly, I think that you handled the Watershed Implementation Plan well. I think you sent a draft off, you didn't sign it, you sort of thumbed your nose up at the state. I think it's time for us to do that again. I think we need to take a position to let the state know, just as Mr. Malinsky just said, just as Mr. Schneckenberger said, this is Cecil County. The Governor of the state of Maryland should focus on state issues, let's let Cecil County ins focus on Cecil County issues. So I'm suggesting that you do it again. Go ahead and put together a draft map. I'm gonna talk a few seconds about what I think that draft map should look like. Send it off. Send it unsigned. Send a message to them. Yeah, I know they're threatening, "We're not gonna fund this, we're gonna take away your rights." Game on. Let's try it. Somebody's gotta take a stand. Let's be a leader. Right now, we're a leader. Right now, Cecil County is a leader in this whole push. I was down in Mako, I attended a reception down there, and what I heard was that Cecil County is one of the first counties to actually put together a draft map. We're way ahead of the rest of the state around. Why don't we lead the front against the state? Why don't we be the leaders to say, "Hell no, we're not gonna take it anymore." Now, what should that draft look like? It's been said, and I'm not gonna be repetitive, but the fact of the matter is, there were 40-some Cecil County citizens, emphasis on Cecil County citizens, that spent countless hours putting together a comprehensive development plan. That comprehensive development plan was reviewed by a planning commission, was reviewed by the county Commissioners, and ultimately with some changes, was approved. That plan was then sent to the Maryland Department of Planning. The Maryland Department of Planning approved that plan just a year ago, and now we're being told to rip it up, throw it away, and let's make everything green. Let's do it again, let's thumb our nose up at the state of Maryland, let's not send something approved, and if we are gonna send a draft, let's make it look like what the Cecil County citizens have already agreed upon.
Joyce Pauls, 873 Laurel Road in Maryup Elton. I'm here wearing two hats tonight. The first hat is that as a representative of the Cecil County Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber asked me to come and to tell you that they will support the tier map that most resembles the comprehensive plan. They feel that's very important. As a private citizen, I want to tell you that I'm against Plan Maryland, and I'm against the tier maps, all of them. And I read a very interesting paper from Richard Rothschild, who's a Commissioner in Carroll County, and I just wanna quote one very brief statement that he made, because I truly believe that it's right align. He stated that "There's no clear compelling evidence, model, or proof of concept that provides empirical evidence that they, the state, what they want is better than what we, the counties, want." I agree with Mario. Let's tell them we're not doing it.
Harlan C. Williams, 5800 Telegraph Road. Very short and sweet, I talked to the Commissioners before the last meeting, and that's about a very simple approach to creating a stop to this whole tier mess, and that is a violation of Article 66B, and I repeat and repeat it. 66B was created by the state legislature for the counties and other jurisdictions in the state of Maryland to create their own zoning and planning. They have violated that, and I urge you, Commissioners, all five of you, to seek legal advice and try to attack this thing. We can hold this thing up in courts for years and years, through state courts and even federal courts, because it is absolute violation of Article 66B, and they should know it and have never paid any attention to it. And on this tier business, I think one of the worst things in the whole tiers in the last part of tier 4, that they, last words, "If minor subdivision is approved, the property will be active on 7/31/2012. No further subdivision is applicable or can occur." That means if a person had 100 acres, they could have five lots. If a person had 2,000 acres, they had five lots, and never again be able to subdivide. Absolutely ludicrous. Let's fight this whole thing by pushing that Article 66B and getting part where legal partners.
My name's Wayne Stafford. Here as the President of Cecil County Farm Bureau, and I just wanna reiterate a couple of points that we made last week when we were here, and that is Maryland Farm Bureau is opposed to any tier maps. It is, I feel, an unconstitutional taking of private property rights, and we wanna reiterate what we said before, that we do the minimum. My opinion is send the map back using the state lands and already-preserved farms, use them as tier 4. But it's the very minimum that we can, and I also like that, what he said is to sign, send back something that's not signed. Senate Bill 236, I kinda consider it a large octopus with many outreaching tendencies. And some of them are kinda down low in the murky wood every time we look into it, just like the formula Mr. Sennstrom said, you know, you have to take in, and then you're not allowed to use state land, county land, federal land, or already-preserved farms, which, you know, tier 4 may be 1 to 20, but by the time you're done, you might be 1 to 30, 1 to 40. But, and the landowners in this county know what their land is worth, and they also know what this will do to it. And just like, you know, your equity and borrowing power on the farm. Excuse me. And also, the other thing is, that was not really defined, it says areas dominated by, you know, houses for tier 4, or how, you know, the land, but it doesn't give any definition of what they mean by dominated by. So, you know, I don't know how you draw a guideline or a map of any sort where you have no idea, is it a mile, is it 100 feet, what is dominated by? And I'm rambling on, I'm sorry, I haven't felt very well today, but I wanted to come anyway, but I wanted to reiterate what we, you know, said the last time, and I will reiterate, if you wanna stand up to the state, you'll stand behind it.
My name is Ruth Parish. I speak for myself and my husband. We live at 173 McKinney Town Road. We bought...